I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6 o'clock PM on February 1st, 2024. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda item for the regular board meeting scheduled at 7:00 PM on February 1st, 2024. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbajek, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. The next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Having no one wishing to speak, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Dr. Eldridge, are there any reports by administration?
Yes, Board of Trustees, we will have a presentation from Mr. Guerra on the financial update, and then Item 5C, and then Item 5L, which is our Student Nutrition Software from Kristin Hess and Chris Moore. So, Mr. Guerra?
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Okay, good evening, Ms. Hatfield, and the rest of the board. So, as you know, this is our monthly financial report. And the financials that you have in front of you this evening are for the month ending December 31st, and it completes the fourth month of our fiscal year. So, last month, if y'all remember, the revenue collection showed around 8%. As you can see on Page 1 of the report, on the top right side, the revenues have jumped to about 30% for the year so far. And you will see in the report next month, there will be another significant increase in the collections, as these two months, December and January, are the busiest times of the year for the business office and the tax office for collections. Okay, on the expense side, as you can see on Page 2 of your report, it shows about 31% of the budget expended to date, which is where we should be with us again being four months now, or a third of the way through the fiscal year. So, and I'm happy to report that we've been starting to monitor the initiatives we put out, the overtime initiative we rolled out this year. The results show that we've been able to reduce the overtime expense district-wide for the third consecutive month in a row now. So, this is really positive things for us, because it kind of shows the initiatives that we're starting to roll out are working for the district. So, if there's any questions on the financials, I'll take them now.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Board members, questions about the financials? Mr. Herbajek?
Thank you. Yeah, good information on the overtime. Could I get a little bit of clarification on our columns specific to the revenue section on the financials, where we have adopted budget and then current amended budget? I just don't remember that we had done any amendments, but the revenue numbers are different.
Which page are y'all?
The first one. So, in special revenue funds, well, just overall, the grand total's all revenue. You know, adopted was 410, and the current amended budget is 443.
Okay, the, well, the special revenue funds aren't funds that y'all adopt. Those, as we get awarded, as our NOGAs come out and they award us what our federal fund awards for the year will be, as we get the awards and we implement those.
So, are there federal revenue funds also in local revenue? Because those numbers increase. And keep it, more revenue is not a bad thing. That's not what I'm saying. I think it's just a transparency and my confusion on the title of the column, you know, current amended budget, when I don't think we've amended.
No, and if you notice on the very top column where it says general funds, those are identical numbers through local, state, federal, and the resources are zero at this time, but the 334, 334,236,959 match the adopted and the current amended budget.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Hatfield, we might need to discuss, you know, from a transparency of what the board is adopting, amending, and approving, understanding that we don't have that task from the federal side, but maybe figuring out a way that we clarify that in what we're seeing, so that we, as a board and the community, knows what we've adopted and amended if we have later amendments.
Okay, so, for clarity, Mr. Guerra, you're talking about the general fund amounts are equal on the adopted budget and the current amended budget, but then in the special revenue, we have a different amount. But you're saying the board doesn't adopt that budget, but for transparency and clarity, maybe coming back to the table and the board better understanding, or having the opportunity to ensure that we understand when we're looking at this, the differences? Okay. Dr. Eldridge?
I also think you need to explain what a NOGA is, so that they understand when you're using terms.
That's right. So, the board, as your board, you know, you adopt three budgets for us. You adopt the general fund budget, you adopt the debt service budget, and you adopt the food service budget. The special revenue funds, the NOGA, as we call it slang-wise, is the Notice of Grant Award. So, those normally run 15 months, sometimes longer. As you know, the ESSR funds run over concurrent years. So, as we get those Notice of Grant awards, they're usually specific, as we apply for them, and then when they actually award them, then that's when we put them into the budget. But those are, those are the funds that you won't approve.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Guerra. Dr. Eldridge, any other reports?
Okay, our next item is 5L, Consider and Approve the Student Nutrition Software System. Kristin?
Members of the board, my name's Kristin Hess, and I'm the Director of the Student Nutrition Department, and this evening, I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 5L, which is Consider and Approve RFP 2023 12051 for our Student Nutrition Software System. So, many of you are probably thinking, what does that entail? But just like any other departments, we have a big extensive software system that touches every component of our program. And you can see a couple of those highlighted in red up there, which are menu planning, inventory management, excuse me, menu planning, inventory management, our point of sales, free and reduced application processing and notification, online menus, digital menus, online prepayment, transaction histories, and central warehouse features. So, it really touches every component of how we run our program. Okay, so, just to give you a tiny little bit of history, back in 2006, long before I joined the team, we implemented what was kind of our foundation of our program, which is a system called Heartland NutriKids. And since then, we've made a lot of additions to that, to offer additional features to parents, to our staff, to students as well. And so, you can see, we've, over the years, added a couple of different programs. But essentially, where that got us is that we have multiple vendors with multiple programs that all have to interact at different points. And from that time until about 2020, we started to realize that our software was getting a little bit obsolete. The company who provided it also came out with a new software and was really pushing everybody to migrate over to that software. And so, at that point, we want to look at, is this still ultimately the best vendor? Unfortunately, about the time we started demoing other softwares, the pandemic happened, and it kind of had to be put on hold. So, here we are in 2024, finally able to start to evaluate those softwares that are out there, knowing that there were vendors that had all-inclusive systems that would replace all these mismatched systems that had been hodgepodge together over the years. And so, we did spend this fall semester looking at that. Some of the big reasons why, and I've already kind of mentioned, that we'd be looking to replace, are that there's many different touchpoints for all of our users. So, when you think about from a parent perspective, what the needs would be for student meals, you would think about prepaying or viewing your students' transactions and what they're eating with us, maybe submitting free and reduced applications, needing to print a free and reduced letter that demonstrates your eligibility status for other programs and discounts. And so, there's lots of different reasons and places where you'd have to go to be able to do that at present. Another thing is the technology is obsolete. Again, our current vendor has gone out and created another project and really, or excuse me, not project, product, and they've really stopped, discontinued providing updates and troubleshooting and customer support for the existing product that we have in place. So, again, then there are the lack of customer support. There's excessive data entry. So, as we brought on each of those additional programs, it got to the point where we were having to put the same information into this program to get this to load, this program to get this to show, and so on and so forth. So, we're looking to have a program that would save us time on that backhand side as well, and provide consistent information across all of our systems. There's a lot of potential for inconsistencies and errors because of that. And then also, there's not as much real-time data transactions. So, if a student becomes free in between breakfast and lunch, we want them to be able to come in at lunch and get a free status. But because of multiple systems having to speak to each other to be able to make those things happen, it's not as real-time as we know it has the potential to be. So, that was another one of the goals in the process. So, you can see here, and I won't get into what each and every one of these are, but our current software and all those different systems I referenced actually are, affect multiple groups of people. 75% of those people, as you can see, are us in my department, and our different employees and the different aspects of the program. But another big part, and the one I think that truly stands to benefit the most from this transition, is our parents and our students. So, as I mentioned, all those different places that parents would have to go to prepay, submit an application, print a letter, all of those great things are in those different systems that you see up there in the corner. And then all the ones that we handle on the backhand side, you'll see, are there subsequently on the other side. So, with this implementation, if we were to award this evening, that would go from looking like that to looking like that. And so, what would be really wonderful is this Cybersoft product has a Primero Edge, which is our whole backhand side, and School Cafe, which would be the entire front side for parents. So, one thing that's really wonderful, parents would be able to create an account, add their students, and then from there, they can do anything meal-related to their students. They can add funds to their accounts, they can submit free and reduced applications, they can print eligibility letters, they can view their students' transactions, they can request refunds and transfers, which is currently a paper process, which obviously we're moving away from as best we can. And they can also submit verification documentation. So, what you'll see underneath each of those are additional bullets that are new features that will be offered to each of these different parties that use these different software touchpoints. So, we really have the benefit of being able to streamline all of those products and get them all into one place, so that all of those problems that I mentioned before would be addressed with this replacement. Okay, and this is just an example, and I know it's very, very small, but I wanted to be able to give you guys the opportunity to see what this would look like from the parents' perspective, because if any of you who have children here in the district know, there's a couple of different software systems that you'd have to go use, or websites, if you will, so different usernames and passwords that you have to remember and things of that nature. So, here with this website, you'll see that you can log in, create your account. This, these are fake students, by the way. They've added their two students, so you can see those students' balances. You can see that they're allowed to apply for benefits, which are the free and reduced application, make a payment on their account, and all those other different little features that are all in one place now for those parents who have students here in the district. All right, so, our current phased approach, because this system does touch every aspect of our program, it is going to take some time, and we don't want to do any part of it partially or halfway. We want to do it 100% and be able to do it and serve all these wonderful features that this program has the capability to bring us. So, here in the fall, we've done a lot of research, we demoed all the products that were out there, and we also went through the procurement process to get us to today. And we did that in conjunction with our technology department. They've been very involved in the process, they sat on the awarding committee, because we wanted to make sure that any transitions that we made were in line with how the district is currently utilizing technology. In the spring, now, we're looking at software implementation, so assuming there is an award today, then we would go directly into migrating over to that new software. That wouldn't touch parents or students this year, because that software implementation is really just us building things on the back-of-house side. And we'll be doing that in conjunction with technology as well. In the process of this, we also want to replace all of our hardware, so that we have current hardware that can work smoothly with this new software as well, and that will be in conjunction with technology. Over the summer, we'll be doing a big push to migrate parents over to the new platform, so that when the school year starts, there's no confusion about where you go to complete your free and reduced application. Anything that's associated with the student in terms of their account balance will also move over to the new system with them. All they'll have to do is add their student to it. So, all of the other information doesn't go away, there's not any additional steps aside from creating an account and adding your students that parents would need to complete. And that will be done in conjunction with communications, who will help us get the word out there, technology, and student services. So, lots of different efforts will be going on to make sure that we can get parents efficiently over to this new system. And then the next phases that will come will be front-of-house implementation, so that's everything that touches the customer. So, you can think of that as anything beyond the serving line. So, that will be our point of sales for our cashiers, where we bring in meals, and then all of the parent side. Okay, so, we really want to get that benefit out to their, to the parents first, and then also make sure that we're not changing it up on them mid-year by doing that portion of the program later. So, we wanted to make sure that happened first. So, then going into the spring, we'll implement the back-of-house, which will give us time to train and set up the back-of-house, which is all of the menu and inventory features that we were referring to before. And we'll start to work on procuring the temperature monitoring. So, again, that will all be with, in conjunction with our technology department. And then our next step would be to, in, loop in additional features that these programs have to offer, but that aren't high priority at the moment. So, we would circle back to do those with digital menu boards, so that students can view the menus that are being offered, and then also temperature monitoring. I can elaborate on that, but it's essentially monitoring the temperatures of our equipment in the kitchens to make sure we don't lose food, and then monitoring the temperature of the food items that we cook, so that if at some point someone were to call into question whether or not we had good food safety practices in the kitchen, there's documentation of all the temperatures that we take throughout the flow of food. So, this big initiative was something I shared with you guys back in June, whenever I came, because it was one of the big things we wanted to make happen. It is all-encompassing across our entire program, so it's going to take a little while. It's taken the majority of this year just to get to this point, but in doing so, we're hoping to allow the parents to use the same platform for everything, to allow administrators to enter data once and be consistent across all platforms, to allow real-time communication so that all of those things related to student eligibility transfer immediately. And another part of that will be replacing the hardware, and there's just a lot of really great options in terms of what's out there that could also allow us to use the software more efficiently. So, what you can expect to see moving forward is, from our parents' perspective, we'd be doing a lot of communication, trying to participate in as many different opportunities to get parents onto that new platform, and make them aware so that they can do it on their own if they don't participate in any of the events. So, that would be Parent Square, social media, enrollment gatherings, and meet-the-teacher events if possible. And so, what you guys can expect to see is that the next parts of those, that phased transition, will include us coming back with a hardware procurement bid that we'd like to award to replace that as well, and then us coming back later, probably later in the year, next year, with a temperature monitoring equipment and software bid. So, it would all be looped in and integrated, but it just has to kind of happen at a paced flow, if that makes sense. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Board members, questions? Ms. Garza Rojas?
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about that.
Oh, good.
I have one question. Is it mobile app-friendly?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have, several of the programs we have now are also on mobile apps, but they're all different mobile apps, so that will be another great feature for parents as well.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Derrick?
I have to ask the money question. So, I think I caught that you said that current funds in students' accounts will transfer over to the new system?
Yes.
Okay, which makes a parent who just put money in their kid's account today, and I went ahead and was like, I'm gonna put more than usual, so I don't have to do this again in a couple months?
Sure.
So, okay, good. And then the other question about money is, I know the current app that we use, there's a service fee. How will the service fee on this new one compare to the one we're already using?
Sure, so, the new company has a couple of different ways that you can set up that fee to be assessed, but one of the great things about it is that it's a percentage of the transaction. So, you're not going to be charged 275 if you're trying to put $5 on the account. So, there's a minimum of a dollar, and so, we'll always charge $1, but if you're just trying to put $20 on, the fee will be less than if you're just trying to put $100 on at once. And additionally, it will be by transaction. So, what we would encourage parents with multiple students to do would be to pay on both students' accounts at the same time and only incur the fee once.
Is there a maximum?
That's a great question.
So, I guess, do you know, like, if it was $100, what's the percentage?
I'd love to get back to you on that.
Okay, okay, that's fair.
Because I know there are three options, and I don't want to-
Because right now, it is 275. So, I'm thinking, like, if we're talking 5%, 10%, I mean, that's obviously significantly more for $100 going onto the account, so.
I, I said, because there are three options, I don't want to misspeak on what that maximum is, but I will certainly get that information back.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Guerra?
I have one comment, speaking of money. So, of course, there's a cost to this, but as you know, this is one of the three budgets that y'all approve as a board, and she's really, really strict, like, the more fund balance we have in general fund, obviously, the better. But she can only have so much fund balance before we started getting nasty notes from the state, MTA, and everybody who watches her. So, this is part of the strategic plan to make sure she keeps her fund balance in a certain range, so we don't get any of those nasty letters. So, this is 100% budgeted and it's planned.
Thank you. Ms. Benavides?
Thank you for answering the money question. When you talked about the service, service fee for the system that we're paying now, are parents paying that fee now?
Yes.
On the system? Okay, I don't have kids in the district, so it's been a while.
Sure, no, it's a great question, yeah.
And so, are you a cashless system?
We actually also accept cash and checks at the serving line. So, parents can still send money with their students. That will never stop, as far as I'm concerned. So, we always want to have people have options for how they can make those payments, but just like you guys know with every other system, they want that convenience fee that comes with being able to have the convenience of paying online. But we'll always continue to accept cash and checks in the serving line.
Okay, and then, does the new system, is your ordering from vendors incorporated in that as well?
Yes, and one of the really excellent features of transitioning to this new system, and one of the reasons why some of those icons went away as I went from one slide to the next, is that they actually auto-export orders to our current vendors. So, our grocery distributor and also our milk distributor, they can auto-export an order and just shoot it off without ever having to go to those vendors' websites. So, it's also a cost savings on the backend for the time that that will save for our staff as well.
That's great. And finally, can I ask how many kids are on the system, and what about our ESL families transitioning?
So, that would, the hope would be that everybody gets on it once, and then you're on it, and you don't have to do anything additional unless you have to add students at a later point. The website also does have a feature that allows them to go and get chat help as well, and also to view the website in multiple languages. So, that should be very, very helpful. The first part of your question, could you repeat it? I want to make sure I get that, too.
I don't remember. What did I ask? I'm sorry. Yeah, I think you did cover.
Okay, okay, wonderful.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
No problem.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hess. I'm very excited it's going to be mobile-friendly and in one place, because I do pay in one account, and in the mornings, we look to see what's in lunch, so, and it just gets very confusing about which thing you're going to open. And I really appreciate the intentionality to work with student services and enrollment opportunities, because there are a lot of apps and things that parents need, and so, it's going to be really great. So, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very thorough. All my notes, I had everything checked off, so, thank you so much.
I just remembered the other part of your question. You said, will it be all of our students? So, any of those features that any parents would wish to use will be available on there. They don't have to use them for all of those features. So, some people might get the app and add their students, so they can prepay and never submit a free and reduced application. Some may get it just to submit the free and reduced application and become free and never pay. So, it will serve all of those features. So, ultimately, the goal will be to have everyone that eats meals with us have application, have, excuse me, have a user account with us.
I was thinking about the longevity of what we're using now. I mean, is it fixing to break down, and this is a necessity? Or this is an upgrade just to make our district better?
It's really both. The current system, they're not making us get off of it, but they're not updating it, and they're not providing customer support for it anymore, because they've got a whole different platform that they've redirected all of their resources to. So, eventually, it's already gotten to the point where everything that comes out of that program has to be manipulated to some extent to get it to be accurate. So, with this, with all these systems speaking together in more real-time, we should have more accurate data, more current menus, things of that nature.
Thank you.
All right, board members, any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Hess. Very thorough. Our next item, Dr. Eldridge, did you have any more reports? Nope? Okay. Item number four, we'll move on to that. Board members, do you have any questions regarding consent agenda items? All right, seeing none. We have reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:24 PM. and we are adjourned at 6:24 PM.
All right, seeing none. We have reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:24 PM.
Board members, district staff, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Michael Cohn from Leon Life provides a message followed by the leading of the pledges by Newman Smith High School students, Nick Cody, leading the pledge to the US flag, and Kavia Medalupa, leading the pledge to the Texas flag.
I just want to say this is a very special day to see so many people that I know and love and been part of my life for 21 years here with CFB. So, thank you guys for serving and providing for our students so well. So, if you feel led to pray, I'm going to pray. Join me. Lord, thank you so much for these people who sacrificed their life to serve for very little recognition, not enough pay, and a lot of sacrifice. I just pray that no matter what anybody in this room believes, that you will continue to compel them to love and serve others well. To the name we pray. Amen.
Good evening. My name is Kavya Mendalupan. I'm a senior at Newman Smith High School. I'm involved in Senior Exec, IBA, and Leadership.
My name is Nick Cody. I'm a senior at Newman Smith High School. I'm involved in basketball and P2P.
Our mission at Newman Smith High School is to graduate all scholars to be college, career, and military-ready.
Without remediation.
Please join us for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you to our Newman High School students and to Mr. Cohn for the message. Welcome. We have a full house tonight with lots of staff and students, and we're very excited to welcome everyone. It's February. We have made it through the first cold spell of 2024. We will see what the rest of this spring semester holds. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Tara Herboczek, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benabides, Kim Brady, Ileana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guest must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. When board members address Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guest, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. Our next agenda item is Item Number Two, Special Presentations and Recognitions. Item 2A, Recognizations. Ms. Parnell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. Tonight, we want to begin our recognitions by announcing our CFB Champion Award for February. Sponsored by CFB and Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, the CFB Champion Award recognizes teachers, employees, students, and community members for exemplifying excellence. Tonight, the Student Champion Awards for February are presented to Erin Fernandez, an eighth grader at Field Middle School, and Anthony Antones, a 12th grader at Early College High School. Students, if you'd please come forward. These students are being recognized for demonstrating excellence in character. Erin and Anthony recently found a school key that was inadvertently misplaced at one of our campuses. The owner was trying to locate the key when the students found it and turned it in. Their quick action is the perfect example of how it takes all of us working together, students, staff, parents, and community members, to ensure that we have safe schools. Thank you, Anthony and Erin, for demonstrating excellence in character, and congratulations on being our Students of the Month for February. And we also have two very proud principals and family members, if you'd like to come forward for a photo as well.
Next, I would like to introduce Sarah Mendoza Theroff. She's the Project Adam Texas Coordinator for Cook's Children Heart Center for a special presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here this first day of American Heart Month. This is a very appropriate award we're about to go over here at this meeting. For those of you that aren't familiar with our program at Cook Children's, Project Adam, which stands for Automated Defibrillators and Adam's Memory, is a national nonprofit program intended to help schools and all communities build CPR, AED, or Public Access Defibrillator programs. It began in 1999 after Adam Lemel, a 17-year-old Whitefish Bay, Wisconsin, high school student, collapsed and died while playing basketball. Adam's parents, Patty Lemel Clayton and Joe Lemel, collaborated with Children's Hospital Wisconsin to create the program in Adam's Memory. Cook Children's became an affiliate in 2011, and today, Project Adam has grown to 42 national hospital affiliates in 32 states. Schools nationwide need support to implement CPR, AED programs to save lives, and Project Adam provides the resources to do so. Project Adam's mission is to prevent sudden cardiac death in schools through awareness, education, and training on sudden cardiac arrest and the critical need for a timely response. Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD schools have completed training for all staff on sudden cardiac death, including warning signs, communication, procedures, and other staff roles. Campuses also participate in Annual Cardiac Emergency Response, or AED drills, which is an important exercise that helps measure preparedness and strengthens a school's planned and practiced response. CFB ISD is committed to continuing annual education training. This Heart Safe School designation recognizes the great work spearheaded by Sandra Leek and the CFB ISD nurses. Each of these 18 schools in CFB ISD has an emergency response team and a plan in the event of a sudden cardiac arrest. Cook Children's proudly recognizes each of you for achieving Heart Safe School designation in our program at Cook Children's. Cardiac death can happen in minutes. Rescuers have three to five minutes to save a life, making emergency action plans critical. Children can be affected at any age, and often cardiac arrest is the first symptom that 50% of children experience. Since anyone might be the one to witness the event, it is important for all staff members to have some general awareness of the facts, what a sudden cardiac arrest looks like, warning signs, the importance of rapid response, basic AED information, such as where it is and what it is, what to do when someone collapses, and how to initiate the emergency plan in the building. We truly appreciate your district for taking the steps and the time to make your schools' hearts safe. And on behalf of myself and all of us at Cook Children's, thank you for working with us to save more lives.
Thank you, Sarah. At this time, I'd like to ask you to move forward, as well as Sandra Leek is with us, our Director of Health Services. And we have 18 campuses, as was mentioned. I'm going to call our elementary schools first, so representatives, including the principal and nurses, if you'd please come forward. And I'd like to start with Blanton Elementary School. And I'd like to start with Blanton Elementary School, Davis Elementary School, Forno Elementary School, Kent Elementary School, Los Kalinas Elementary School, McCoy Elementary School, McLaughlin Strickland Elementary, McCorder Elementary School, Rainwater Elementary School, and also our Child Development Academy. So, congratulations to all of our elementary campuses on achieving this very, very important accreditation. Next, our middle schools achieving this accomplishment are Blaylock Middle School, Barbara Bush Middle School, Dan F. Long Middle School, and DeWitt Perry Middle School. And next, our high school campuses, Creekview High School, Ranchview High School, Newman Smith High School, and RL Turner High School.
Congratulations again to all of our recipients tonight, and that concludes our recognitions. Well, congratulations are definitely necessary this evening, and great enthusiasm and excitement for all the efforts that have gone into this initiative. So, thank you all for being here, but also, most importantly, thank you for the dedication that you've put in that can save a life if we need to. So, we appreciate each of you and your efforts, and Ms. Leek and her team, and thank you, Cook Children's, and to our students, thank you for showing good character. And thank you, Ms. Parnell, for the presentations. At this time, we'll move on to Item 2B, Trustees Reports. Trustees, would anyone like to share any celebrations or observations from the last month? Mr. Shackman?
I had an opportunity last week to represent the district at the India North Texas Association. It was a phenomenal event. There were nearly 3,000 children and parents there. And just phenomenal part of our district are our folks that are of Indian descent, and they are an important part. And it was a great celebration. The other thing it was a great celebration was yesterday, I got to be at Creekview High School and participate in their annual JROTC inspection. And it's a big deal, and the kids performed incredibly well, got very high marks. The commander, who was in charge of the inspection, was sharing with me after the fact that he believes this is one of the couple of best NJROTC programs in Southern Texas. So, we're glad. It was exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman. Ms. Garza Rojas?
I just wanted to share from my adopted campus, Turner, their amazing soccer team right now. If you guys haven't had a chance to go see them, I am so proud of the boys and the girls' soccer team. They're doing a wonderful job. Please go check them out.
Ms. Brady?
Since I'm next in line over here, I just want to do a shout-out to both Smith and Turner. The musicals were phenomenal. I don't know if you all got a chance to see Sister Act in Shrek? The costuming, the makeup, the acting, the singing, the accents, incredible. We have some amazing kids in this district. Amazing, amazing, amazing. So, if you haven't got a chance to see a musical at the high school level, please go in the fall, because they're incredible, absolutely incredible. Thank you.
Agreed. It was amazing. Ms. Derrick?
Ms. Brady stole my thunder. So, I was going to say this past Saturday night was the end of high school musical season for CFB, which is very sad at our house, because it's our favorite season. There's always two in the fall and two in January. Yeah, January. They were amazing this year. All four high schools did such a fantastic job. Musicals are more than just theater, and I think it's really important, and it's actually very appropriate tonight, because we're going to get an update from Fine Arts tonight, that musicals give our kids from across all Fine Arts an opportunity to do their craft and to do it well. And it's so fun to sit in the audience and recognize all the pieces that come from every angle. You have your orchestra pit. You have your tech theater. You have your song, dance, acting. There's just so much going on, and our students in CFB are talented. So, like Ms. Brady said, next fall, start looking for those musicals. And I encourage you to take your families and go support them, because these kids put in a ton of time leading up to those shows. This is, in my opinion, and my kiddos did theater, comparable to community theater. I mean, this is not your just joke theater. This is legit worth every dollar you would spend. I will stop.
Ms. Benavides?
I second that, Ms. Derrick. Beautiful, beautiful actions by our children, our staff, everyone that guides them in that. I had the opportunity to sit in the CIC review with you at Perry. Really great things going on there. Thank you for inviting me to that. It's just wonderful to hear about it. We had the opening of Hoya Park in Farmers Branch, and I got to spend time with Farmers Branch Elementary kids there, which is amazing. They got to get on it before anybody else. So, that was a lot of fun. And then, last night, I got to go see the stars that were very bright out at the Ag Barn. We went out to feed the cows. Luna and Moana are with child, so we're going to have babies soon. And then, of course, our Bakeda is doing really well. She's still young, but the cows, everything out there is just so great. And the kids just have a different heart. I mean, they're just beautiful, and I love the opportunity to go out there and spend time with them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, so I'll share. One of my highlights this month was going to D W at Perry to a class, and I did a presentation, What Does a Board Member Do? But I learned something really important, that I am out of shape on working with middle school kids. I was a middle school math teacher, but I got there and I said, "I'm going to play a game. Is it the administration's job or is it the board member's job?" And the teacher looked at me and said, "Do you have prizes?" And I went, "No." And she bailed me out and gave me Jolly Ranchers. So, I owe a teacher at DeWitt Perry some Jolly Ranchers, because I had great participation in my game, because I gave out Jolly Ranchers. And they asked amazing questions. I was just blown away at the questions they asked. And so, kudos to all the people that help these students be wonderful students, be able to ask great questions. And board members, if you go to do a presentation, or if you go to play a game, take some prizes. Thank you.
All right, our next item is 2B, District Announcements.
I would just like to say in our district announcements, Carolyn, thank you for going to the Ag Barn, and we have replaced the light bulb that we couldn't see the cow very well. So, that's been done. I'm appreciative for all of our visits. Just want to give a shout-out to Joe Gillan, Sarah Roland, and Kim Holcomb and Cass. As a team, we got to present at our TOSA Midwinter Conference for our area and to promote CFB. And so, you know, when you submit a proposal to present at a conference, you don't know if it's going to get selected. So, you know, the sessions were well attended, and just to give our brand and name, it's amazing. So, I just appreciate our team. A couple other things. We have a substitute class coming up on Valentine's Day from 8:30 to 11:00. In walking around to the campuses, the teachers are like, "Please, can we get more subs, so we don't have to cover classes?" So, I just want to make sure everyone has that opportunity to attend. We also, PTA is putting on a great event, the Wizards Basketball Game, February 9th at 7:00. So, I hope everybody buys tickets. You can buy them on our website or Parent Square. And you get to see myself be a referee. So, I've got to start watching basketball and hope I can blow the whistle at the correct time and not be made fun of. And the last thing I want to add today was a great day at Creekview, and so glad Leon's here to celebrate you and your teachers and all the hard work. Creekview today was named a National Avid Demonstration School, and that is incredible for our district. So, thank you so much to all the teachers and all the students, the student panel, and the teachers. And there's only 260 nationwide, so go CFB. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. Next on our agenda is Item 2C, Update from PTA. Mr. Barmel?
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge and our esteemed Board of Trustees. I'm Zohair Barmo. I'm the Healthy Lifestyle Chairperson for the CFB ISD Council PTA. We like to start every presentation with our motto, "To Make Every Child's Potential a Reality by Engaging and Empowering Families and Communities to Advocate for Our Children." This month brings a lot of activities for our community to participate in. Council will be hosting the Harlem Wizards on February 9th at Creekview High. Our campuses are competing for the Battle of Bleachers, with the highest ticket sales having a reserved center code section for the attendees. We are also asking each campus to show their school spirit by wearing their school shirts to the game. This year, we have 18 players representing 15 campuses. We are also pleased to announce Police Chief Arredondo as the coach, Assistant Fire Chief Cavano as scorekeeper, and our own Dr. Eldridge as the referee. The tickets are only $1.88 for this action-packed night of fun and laughter. Next, on February 12th, Council in conjunction with the district will be hosting the Texas PTA Live Broadcast of Straight Talk, a Texas PTA program on navigating the smartphone era. Everyone is invited to attend from 12:00 to 1:00 PM at the ESDC Irving Room. Light refreshments will be provided. And on February 13th, we have Raise Your Hand Texas. We'll be hosting a candidate forum for House Seat 115. This is a great opportunity to hear where the candidates stand on important public education issues. All are welcome to attend this nonpartisan event at the Copel Arts Center beginning 6:00 PM. District-wide, we have 6,151 PTA members now. Our membership continues to grow, and you can still join this awesome group of advocates at joinpta.org or on the council website. Again, we thank you for your continued support and advocacy for our children. Together, we are the PTA.
Thank you, Mr. Barmel, and thank you to PTA for hosting the Wizards again this year. Dr. Eldridge has not experienced this. I cannot wait for her to be referee. And thank you for all the important information to help us advocate for CFB. At this time, we want to have a brief pause to allow anyone who wishes to step out of the meeting to do so. Anyone wishing to remain, you are welcome to remain with us for the entirety of the evening. But if you wish to leave, you're welcome to do that, too. We're going to take a short recess to give everybody a chance. It's 7:26 PM. We're taking a five-minute recess. We will be resuming the meeting in one minute. The time is now 7:31 p.m., and we are back in open session. The next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. This candidate, I have two here. Do we have any additional forms? Okay. With no additional forms, we will go ahead and move forward with Audience for Guests. Before we begin, I will remind the audience members of the Board's procedures for handling Audience for Guests. Anyone interested to speak in person during Audience for Guests must have completed a form and listed the topic they wish to discuss prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during Audience for Guests and will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Board dictated by Board Policy BED Local. Because the Board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while also keeping the meeting running efficiently, groups of more than five people who want to present on a particular viewpoint on a topic should appoint one person to speak on behalf of their group. Please remember that the Board cannot deliberate on any subject that is not included on the agenda for this meeting. Board members will listen to the comments but will not respond or answer questions. We will ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you and will begin when you arrive at the podium to speak. Again, that speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. Our first speakers tonight are Victoria Kemp and Bernadette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board Members and guests in the audience. My name is Vicki Kemp, and I am the President of the North Dallas Branch of American Association of University Women. AAUW was founded in 1881 by Marion Talbot, who became the Dean of the College of Women at the University of Chicago, and a leading figure in higher education, and Ellen Swallows Richards, the first woman to earn a degree in chemistry and a leader in the field of home economics. The initial group of 15 women was joined by another 50 alumni to officially launch the American Collegiate Association, ACA, which ultimately became the American Association of University Women. Their stated purpose was for practical education work, for collection and publication of statistical and other information concerning education, and in general for the maintenance of high standards of education. In 1885, the ACA issued its first research report in conjunction with the Massachusetts Bureau of Statistics of Labor. I love this one. Entitled "Health Statistics of Women College Graduates," the report countered a widely-held belief that women's health and fertility was adversely affected by attending college. ACA continued to issue reports throughout this period detailing the work women were doing around the nation. Throughout the economic boom of the 1920s, the Great Depression, and the New Deal of the 1930s, World War II, and post-war era of the 40s and 50s, AAUW continued to thrive. During the 60s, it ushered in an era of significant social progress. AAUW grew increasingly engaged in the civil rights movement. Currently, AAUW advocates for laws and policy at the federal and state level. AAUW galvanized and led the fight for the passage of the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act of 2009 and for updated pay laws in dozens of states. We continue to focus on women's education, which brings us here today. Bernadette and I wish to bring your attention to the Nancy Watten Scholarship.
I can go fast. I was a teacher. I'm Bernadette Rodriguez. I am the Chair for the Nancy Watten Scholarship. We are here today to bring attention to this. Many of you know she's a former Board Member. She has had a great impact in this district. This scholarship offers opportunities to women who have had to have a delay in their education, and they are returning to school. This is for an undergraduate degree. The deadline's March 18th. You can find more information on our website at www.northdallas-texts.aaww.net. We are happy to answer any inquiries. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for coming this evening, Ms. Kemp and Ms. Rodriguez. District Representative will follow up with you. Our next Audience for Guests is Larry Morris.
Members of the Board, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Larry Morris with Congresswoman Van Dyne's office, and I was asked by members of the PTA to come address y'all and speak about our elementary fly-in that we're having in Washington DC on April 11th and 12th. This is going to consist, this is going to be for elementary-age kids from kindergarten to sixth grade to learn in Washington DC about the civic process. And we're having events such as a nighttime tour of the United States Capitol, a breakfast at the Library of Congress, a tour of the Washington Monument going all the way up to the top. And then there's also individual tours that we're working to arrange through our office for those who are interested, such as the FBI Headquarters, the White House, and other, you know, famous landmarks in Washington DC. And it's a perfect opportunity for those kids, you know, again, kindergarten through sixth grade to learn about our democracy and our civic process and, you know, everything that happens in Washington DC. And we're truly excited. This is the first time that we're doing it, and it's, you know, truly, we're very excited to be able to host this process for, you know, hundreds of kids and their families in the 24th District of Texas and provide this opportunity for them. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris, for the information. And Representative from the District will follow up with you. Our next agenda item is Item Number Four, Non-Action Items for Discussion. We'll start with Item 4A, which is a construction update. Mr. Blackburn.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield. Just a few quick slides tonight to share an update. As a quick reminder, later on, we're going to be selecting the construction procurement method for the Student Services Center project. It's just the first step of a three-step process, and it's just for selecting the delivery method. So that'll be a little bit later. And the main thing I wanted to share tonight is that of the 2018 bond funds, we have a total, if you look the last row there, of about $21,200,000 remaining. And so, we're glad to have navigated the last few years with COVID and all the difficulties that came along with that. I can tell you from my work elsewhere that it was not easy to complete a construction project in the last few years. And delivering everything that was involved in the 2018 projects and still having a little bit left over is really, it's good to see. It's encouraging. So, and I believe, yeah, a couple of questions that you might have. We did fulfill our obligation in terms of all the priorities and planning that were done for the 2018 bond. In September of 2022, the Bond Oversight Committee reported to the trustees that we had fulfilled the intentions and expectations of the 2018 bond. And then, how can bond savings be used? They can be used in the same way that they were, that any bond funds can be used, new buildings, additions and renovations to existing facilities, land acquisition, technology, infrastructure, and equipment for newer existing buildings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Board Members, any questions or comments? Mr. Ratchett.
I just want to offer to my colleagues on the Board and to the entire facilities team that savings in a large capital program like this, you know, doesn't happen unless there's a partnership of everyone involved. And that includes from our own internal facilities team on monitoring contractors and architects and what's happening, working with our stakeholders, community buy-in, all of those things. So to have, this is definitely the spot we want to be in at the end of a bond instead of the other way around. So I just want to offer my thanks to our CFB team and then to all the stakeholders that played a part in the 2018 bond process.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, well, I'll ask a question. So, being that the excess funds that are remaining can be spent on other priorities, what are our next steps for establishing that?
We're talking to different departments about the needs that are out there. One thing that we're looking at, we want to do some permanent walls and doors at four different elementary schools. And we talked about a Student Services Center to be a one-stop-shop. We need to replace the turf. It's out of date now at the Standard Field. The scoreboard there needs help, some outdoor athletic equipment. I mean, there, there's quite a few items. So, but we're talking to all those departments right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shackman.
Thank you. We appreciate the information. Is any of this discussion focused on finishing Standard Stadium seating? There's only half there on the visitor's side.
My understanding, and others may jump in here, my understanding is that with the guidance of the Bond Oversight Committee for the 2018 bond, that scope was adjusted to do pre-cast bleachers instead of what was originally planned. So, based on what was reported in September of '22 by the Bond Oversight Committee, they, their report was that our intentions and priorities had been fulfilled. So based on that, we don't consider that there's something left undone on the visitor's side.
I would like to request that we go back to the Bond Oversight Committee meeting minutes prior to that 2022 presentation, because my understanding from sitting as the trustee on that was that the foundation was being built with the intent that the other two portions, a left side and a right side, whole nother section, could be added on to go back to the original scope. And so, if we could pull those meeting minutes to confirm that information, I think that would be helpful. Because I understand what you're saying, the scope was adjusted. My understanding, I'd just like to see what the recollection is on that. Any additional comments, Ms. Derek?
I want to ask a question about the remaining funds and the ideas that are being presented. I know our Bond Oversight Committee for that specific bond has concluded, which means there's not a board-appointed oversight on that. Will those recommendations, suggestions from departments come back before the Board for a discussion before any work is moved forward?
Any, as you know, any expenditure over $100,000 has to come before the Board for approval. So, most of these expenditures are, I would say, probably all of them are going to exceed that amount. So you should see every single expenditure that we're considering.
Are you imagining that this is going to be like project by project at a time versus you'll present back an entire package?
Hopefully, we'll be able to do it in a few packages. I'd rather not do it project at a time just for efficiency's sake. But hopefully, it'll be a few projects at a time in a package.
Okay, so the Board will be made aware. Thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
Ask you to reach out to Good Elementary, because I know when they did their playground, the west side has covering and awning, but the east side, which is the front of the school, that the littles play in, does not ever get one because of whatever excuse was given. But if there is funding, that would be a great completion for them. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Our next agenda item is Item 4B, Fine Arts Update.
Good evening. My name is Mark Rohr. I'm the Director of Fine Arts, and tonight it is my pleasure to speak to you about the amazing things going on in our district's fine arts programs. Before I begin to give an overview of the Fine Arts Department, I feel it important to briefly discuss fine arts programs in the public schools generally and what makes them essential to every student we teach. I could go on about this all evening. I won't, but please know that I'm happy to go into further detail with any of you at any time. For tonight, suffice for it to say that the research is convincing about the myriad benefits of participation in the fine arts. Some of those findings are: Student enrollment in the fine arts positively correlates with academic and curricular success; attendance rates for students enrolled in fine arts classes are higher than for other students; students in fine arts classes practice thinking in unique and creative ways, ways that are highly sought after in the workforce; fine arts involvement connects students to a diverse community beyond their peer groups and gives students the opportunity to belong and connect. Public school fine arts programs, especially ones like we have in CFB, offer breadth and depth of opportunities in ways that non-traditional schools just don't match. And last, but maybe most important, the arts have fundamental value for their own sake. Every recorded culture has song, dance, music, art, and story. The arts are a big part of what being human and being part of a community is. Here's a quick breakdown of where our teachers will be teaching tomorrow morning and what they'll be up to. We offer art and music on every elementary campus. At our four fine arts academies, that's Blair, Country Place, Kent, and Landry, we offer music, art, theater, and dance. In addition, most every campus teacher offers clubs or ensembles for interested students after school. At the secondary level, we offer curricular art, dance, theater, band, choir, and orchestra to any interested student from grades six through 12 on almost every campus. Classes span a variety of styles and cultures, both band and jazz ensemble, dance, drill team, and ballet folklorico, and more. We also offer AP-level music theory classes. Many students participate in multiple arts activities. Outside of the school day, we offer an elementary honor choir to a select group of fourth and fifth-grade students. We have a growing mariachi presence now on six campuses after starting with one campus two years ago. We have similar growth with ballet folklorico, offered either within dance classes or as a standalone activity. And each high school, as we discussed earlier tonight, mounts a full-scale musical production each year. We have musical productions in some middle and elementary schools as well. Our teachers are on every campus. They are a diverse bunch from a wide variety of backgrounds. This herd of artists is wrangled by myself, my colleague Don Valentine, and our team in the Fine Arts Office. We communicate consistently and collaborate deeply with each of the campus principals. We serve as institutional support, instructional leadership, and we translate what our artist educators are saying into language that may make more sense to a building principal. We are available to campus leadership at every turn, including hiring, staff development, and assistance with problem-solving and creation of new opportunities. The fine arts are a strength of our district. I'm not just saying that because I'm biased, but our teachers walk the talk. Our district has been designated as one of the best communities for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants. In order to receive this designation, a district and community must show support for music in terms of finances, staffing support, curricular strength, and high-quality teaching, both in the rehearsal room and on stage. CFB also received a District of Distinction designation by the Texas Art Education Association. We are one of only 68 school districts in Texas to receive this honor, which is only given to districts who can demonstrate active and thriving visual art programs. But wait, there's more. We received an Award of Distinction as an outstanding school district by the Texas Educational Theater Association, one of only a dozen districts so honored. The TXETA also awarded two campuses, Kent and Blalock, with the Award of Distinction as an exemplary campus. CFB has two out of the 13 elementary or middle schools statewide to receive this recognition. Our campus programs have received accolades too numerous to mention, but I will quickly mention four. Last spring, the dance companies from Newman Last spring, the dance companies from Newman Smith and Creekview were both selected to perform at the 2023 National High School Dance Festival in Pittsburgh. And next month, bands from Blalack and Creekview High School will perform at the Music for All National Festival in Indianapolis. Individually, CFB high school music students are consistently selected as participants of the Texas All-State Bands, Choirs, and Orchestras. Our elementary, middle, and high school art students are recurring honors recipients at the Texas Visual Arts School Astica Event as well as the PTA Reflections Contest. Secondary theater and dance students are regularly honored at the International Thebesian Festival and the Texas Dance Education Association Conference. And our faculty lead the profession, presenting on arts education topics at gatherings for state music, dance, art, and theater professional associations. Our students and staff aren't hiding their creative energy in their classrooms, they are everywhere. CFB fine arts organizations offer literally hundreds of public displays of their work each year. What's equally important is the work we do as the public face of our campuses to the district and as the public face of our district to the communities we serve. Almost every night, there is a fine arts concert, recital, show, or event in the district. Almost every week, some fine arts organization is out representing CFB in the neighborhood. The real work of teaching and learning, of course, happens in the classroom, not onstage. So what happens in a fine arts class here in CFB? It can be difficult to distill since our department covers at least six different art forms and 14 grade levels, but I can try. Obviously, the teaks are the canvas on which our teachers plan their instruction, if you'll pardon the artistic metaphor. Each art form has teaks upon which our teachers base their instruction. Those include the obvious things like learning how to create art, using whatever medium the students are participating with at the time. As the students learn, they prepare for public demonstrations of their work, concerts, recitals, viewings, auditions, and the like. There's more to art than its creation, though. The students also learn about the history of the art form and art's place in both historical and contemporary cultural context. The teachers coach students in developing accurate, thorough assessments of both their own and others' artworks. Everyone is an artist, that is a universal truth. But almost as important, everyone is an arts consumer. We all evaluate and assess art and artworks every day, hundreds of times, and usually without thinking about it. Through our fine arts classes, students refine and hone these skills. Finally, students' artistic growth leads to growth as people. They develop their own artistic skills, learn how to get up after they fall, learn the discipline and dedication that comes from practice, gain confidence participating in groups of people, polish the planning skills that come from long-term projects like musicals and marching band shows, and discover that the arts present opportunities no matter what kind of person they are. I've given a lot of data and facts tonight, but the arts are really about telling stories, and we wanted to do that. So tonight, we want to show you just a few minutes' worth of students' stories from five different CFB students and what the arts mean to them. We asked these students a couple of questions about their time as artists in CFB, and here are their responses.
My favorite part of being in fine arts, um, uh, sure, is probably that there's no wrong way to do anything, that, um, there's, that nobody can tell you you're doing something wrong. There's always something that you are great at, and you never have to feel like you aren't good at something when you can't be good at something.
It's such a big part of life, like, I don't know, I, I found my creative outlet. I love playing music, and I've actually loved that, that was very important. I've also made a lot of friends, and I, I know a lot of people that I wouldn't have known otherwise. But that junior concert, the one where I helped set up and helped, like, clean up, I, I was part of somebody's figure. Like, I was just one person in this huge orchestra making music for hundreds of people, and it was just, it felt nice.
Even though skill levels may vary drastically between players, obviously, as it's, it's high school, but students are, have that same passion, that same drive, that we really push to do amazing things despite where we all come from. We all have different backgrounds, and we're, we're still given the same opportunities. And it's really amazing because you see this drive from completely different people, and it lets us make beautiful music.
Like, I feel, I feel like it's a way to express yourself, because you can express yourself through, like, different theatrical things, whether it's like acting, you know, like, putting on, like, a, you're putting on a different character, so you just can be somebody else, and it's like, the experience is really fun. Um, or it's, whether it's like a dance, you get to kind of, like, be a part of something and express your creativity for your movement. So I find that very interesting.
They've given me, like, a creative outlet for me to express myself. It's like, wow, I can express myself in a way that people will see. And it's just really nice to do, to do stuff that I love for other people to enjoy as well. I really love working with other people because, like I said, they share the same interests as you. So it's like, wow, we're working together on this thing that we both love, and we're making it better together, and the collaboration and just the teamwork, it's, it really comes together to make us a beautiful thing.
The arts matter, and they have mattered in CFB for a long, long time.
I worked for CFB for 20 years. I came to the district, I worked for CFB for 20 years. I came to the district in 1974, and I worked in central office for six years as reading language arts coordinator for K-12. That was really a big job. It kept getting more and more. And then I was principal at Blakenham Elementary for five years. And my last nine years, I was at Daniel Flong Middle School.
Tell us about a tradition that you just love about CFB.
Oh, one of the traditions that I always loved about CFB was going to the performances of the high schools. Just about all the principals in the district would support the fine arts programs, and we have always had a wonderful fine arts program.
I want to finish by pointing out publicly that all we do, we do as a family. My colleague, Don Valentine, you can stand up or wave, Don. She loves that. Who actually founded the dance company at Newman Smith just a few short years ago, coordinates art, theater, and dance. She is also my institutional memory bank and my daily reminder that when you focus on what the students need first, the answers are easier to find. Our secretary and clerk, Reyna Jimenez, and Toni Elcurti handle the organization, paperwork, and many duties as assigned, like the professionals that they are. And lastly, we are fortunate to have a district cabinet who appreciates all the value that arts bring, as well as a Board of Trustees who both support and advocate on our behalf. And I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Um, I love the arts. I have seen the passion from kids in the arts, just like we see tonight. I could get emotional. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Derek?
I'll build on to you, that way you can stop. Um, I said earlier, obviously, the musicals were fantastic. I even made a comment to the theater, or choir director at Newman Smith, how, you know, amazing it is and how exciting it is, and he brought it back into perspective for me. Because I, we were talking about how wonderful it is in CFB specifically, and he said, you know, not every school district can do a, a musical every year. It's, it's a production. It takes a lot of buy-in from the whole school, and, because we're really fortunate to be able to do that here in CFB. And I paused, and I thought, a musical not every year? Like, I mean, that's just, we are so lucky that we, our bar is so high when it comes to fine arts that we don't even blink. We just do it because we know that's what we're supposed to do. And I, I have benefited, our family has benefited from it. I have watched numerous families benefit from this. I've seen the student outcomes improve because of fine arts. I mean, it matters, and it's so exciting. So thank you for the presentation. One comment I forgot to make during my, um, musical, um, out and about comment was, this year, the two spring musicals, the Smith and Turner, were not the same weekend, and I don't know that that was intentional or not, but feedback from what I witnessed. So historically, they've been the same weekend, and that's been really hard for the two schools to then support each other.
I agree.
Because they can't come watch their counterparts down Josie Lane perform. The night I was at Turner, and Ms. Brady, Ms. Hatfield, y'all were both there, the Newman Smith cast of Sister Act was at Shrek after the show, running up to all of the Turner kids, hugging them, congratulating them, and that was so cool to see. And I thought, this is why we have to do this on different weekends, because that's what we want. I mean, it's not a competition. We're all in this together, and we've got amazing kids, and they should be able to cheer each other on. So just my feedback was, love that it was two separate weekends so that they could then support each other in coming to watch.
I will be certain to pass that along.
Ms. Benavides?
I would also like to add that thank you so much for widening our horizons, reaching out to children that do have talent, and their culture allows us to experience what they offer. At the Rainwater Family Martin Luther King Day Parade celebration, we got to see the Creekview dancers there, and they were just amazing. It's just a whole new avenue that they've opened up for them, and it showed an expression of emotion and history and a release of pain that, and celebration. It was just wonderful. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass that along as well.
Please.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much to you and your team and to our dedicated teachers that you support because it makes a difference in kids' lives that they have these opportunities. And so please continue to pass on our appreciation, and go Team CFB Fine Arts.
I will do so, and I can tell you on behalf of my folks, they're very, very grateful for y'all's support. Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is 4C, Report on the 2023 Texas Academic Performance Reports, also known as the TAPER. Ms. Key?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share the long-awaited information on student performance and CFB ISD for the 2223 school year. Please note that the data that we will be reviewing tonight was released by the Texas Education Agency on December 15th. While the information on STAR testing is from the 202223 school year, our financial rating, graduation rate, and the college career and military readiness factors are from the 2122 school year, which all refer to as lagging indicators. So the Texas Education Code requires that the Board of Trustees to publish an annual district performance report and hold a public hearing on information provided within the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as TAPER. And this year, Carrollton Farmers Branch will hold their public hearing virtually, beginning at 5:00 PM, PM on February 26th, during the regularly scheduled District Improvement Council Meeting. And so tonight, we are sharing with the board and those in attendance information related to the annual report, as well as an update to the state's accountability rating process. We are still waiting for the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to release the information on the performance of the previous year's graduates in their first year of college. So typically, had that been released on time, we would be sharing that at this time with you as well. So each year, school districts are assigned two ratings, one on academic performance and another based on public school finance, known as FIRST. And so the anticipated ratings, as you all are fully aware, have not been released due to a lawsuit between other Texas school districts and TEA around the timeliness of releasing the final 2023 Accountability Manual. And so this lawsuit has resulted in the delay of campus reports. They've removed calculation tools and scaling tools that are typically available on the TEA website, and ultimately, they've delayed our annual campus and district rating. Our district did earn a superior achievement in the first rating, which was a 96. And additionally, on January 10th, TEA released our Special Education Determination status through results-driven accountability, and CFB received our status of meets requirements for the 2223 school year. Before we begin looking into the academic performance, let's first take a look at the profile of students and staff in CFB from last school year. Our district serves students from age three to 21 across 35 campuses and three education centers. In 2223, we enrolled nearly 25,000 students and employed over 3,651 personnel, of which 67% were professional staff. Our average teacher salary, which is $62,175 in CFB, is almost $1,500 above the state's average, which is $60,717. TAPER does also provide a view of our staff profile. Our full-time teachers accounted for 52% of our full-time staff last year, and so looking to the bar graph, the majority of our teachers, 56%, had over five years of classroom experience. And so of the 1,850 teachers, 50, 40, excuse me, 46% of our teaching staff had zero to five years of experience. Remembering that these are our students from last year, you can see our CFB ISD student population profile. Our student population has remained relatively unchanged for the past five years, and our Hispanic population rate is slightly higher when compared to the state, which is just under 53%. Regarding student enrollment by program type, we saw an increase in economically disadvantaged students from that 63.6% in 2022 to 66.5% in 2023. Our special services population is continuing to rise, as we can see here, from 13.9% to 15.4. And our emergent bilingual population, the third program type that we see here, has experienced significant growth in our district. We see an increase from 35.1% to 38.8%. And just as information for you all, as of January 23rd, we are serving currently over 42.5% of emergent bilinguals this school year, which we obviously would not see on last year's TAPER, but that was just information for you guys. So turning our attention to state testing results. As released in the TAPER, the preliminary scores from 2023 were initially shared during our September board meeting with you all, and those results included all students testing during the spring administration. These scores shown here from the recently released TAPER include all versions of STAR testing, so that includes three through eight EOCs, who tested during the summer and December, as well as our STAR alternate tests that were taken. Additionally, these scores only include students who were enrolled in CFB on that snapshot date, so that last Friday of October, that was in 2022. TAPER includes two consecutive years of STAR data, and so for comparison purposes, we've included the last three years of scores that were related, that were reported in last year's TAPER as well. And so the table here on the left shows a three-year comparison of student performance at the approaches grade level and above, while the chart on the right shows meets grade level above. And so looking at all subjects combined, for approaches grade level, 70% of, 76% of our students were at or above the passing standards. And you can see as well that gains have been made in comparison to 2022, most notably, all areas saw an increase in approaches grade level or above, as well as meets grade level or above. Another requirement of the district's annual report is showing progress towards our House Bill III board goals, which were previously shared at the previous board meeting in the fall. And so again, just like we saw, in third-grade mathematics, we shared that the scores increased from 44% to 48% at the meets grade level, surpassing the House Bill III board goal that was set at 41. Similarly, looking at the grade-three reading, we shared how scores increased from 48% in 2022 to 51% in 2023, again surpassing the House Bill III board goal set at 42%. And so these past two slides showed quarterly progress based on map testing throughout the school year, as we track performances of our students and help them to set goals for themselves and regarding their achievement. And so we are just now wrapping up the winter map testing for elementary, middle, and high school levels, and so more information will come about how our students did during this middle-of-the-year map testing, and we will get that to you guys. With regards to CCMR board goals, again, you'll remember from our previous presentation that the rigorous target set for the class of 2022 was maintained at 71% despite any COVID ramifications from 2020. And so we see here- And so we see here that 60% of our 2022 graduates were identified as meeting college, career, or military readiness. Current projections for the class of 23 is at 61%. But remember that this is a lagging indicator and so we are scheduled to receive confirmation of this component score along with an accountability rating in September of 2024. And so now on this slide, you can see a more expanded look at our college, career, and military readiness. CCMR includes more than just college-ready factors with test scores like TSI Accuplacer, SAT, or ACT. And so then remembering again that we're looking at the class of 2022, which is a lagging indicator, we'll see here that the coursework taken by graduating seniors while they were enrolled in high school, such as dual credit, advanced placement, on-ramps, college prep, as well as any industry-based certifications earned through our CTE courses. And so it includes our students served by special education who graduate with an advanced diploma or identified as an IEP workforce-ready student. And so our graduates from the class of 2022 outperformed both the state and the region in terms of APIB courses and students who had an IEP and are workforce-ready. And so now we'll turn our attention to graduation rates. Again, we have another lagging indicator to consider. And so as shown on the 10-year trend line, CFB continues to have a four-year graduation rate above 90%. The four-year graduation rate of the class of 2022 in CFB was 92.6%, which remains above the state average of 89.7% and the region, which was at 87.3% for the class of 2022. We know that safety is a top priority. Last year, the number of mandatory expulsions in our district accounts for an overall incident rate of less than 1%. And so that is very small writing. And so we have provided you the slide so that you can take a deeper look into that. Through our Department of Safety and Security, all campuses have a secured, safe entrance. That includes a video bell intercom system. We have interior and exterior cameras that are continuing to be approved, improved across the district. And additionally, our security directors have worked to increase the required staff at all campuses in CFB. As you are well aware, we are awaiting the state's release of our district and campus A-through-F ratings from the new accountability system refresh. And so preceding the hearing, if ratings are released, then we'll be updating you with that information from TEA. And so for the past five years, we've had a relatively similar accountability system with the same performance measures. And this past spring, we know that the proposed manual was released with the intention of the 2023 ratings being released in September. And so as of right now, this is what we know. They anticipated the release in mid-September of our accountability ratings. Then there was a TEA lawsuit announced in late August. We know that district and campus ratings are currently pending. And actually, this upcoming hearing that was originally scheduled for February 12th is now considered to be determined as more information has been presented and coming forward. And so there has not been a new date released for when the hearing will be moved to. And so that is hot off the press for you all to know. And so with that, that concludes my presentation on the student performance and presenting the TAPER with a reminder that CFB will hold a public hearing virtually, beginning at 5:00 PM on February 26th during the regularly scheduled District Improvement Council meeting. And additionally, we will have our annual report posted to the public on our district website under Performance Reporting. And I would hate to miss this opportunity to extend a much-deserved thank you to the work of our teachers, our campus administrators, and the level of intentionality that we're seeing by knowing our students by name and need. We know that by making a prioritized effort to support our students, it were growing our community. And so we also want to thank our families who continue to make sure that their students are present at school, which is only going to increase the growth of our community. Thank you for this time. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Keen, for the thorough report and for the new hot-off-the-press news. But I don't know if it's surprising or not surprising that we're having another delay. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Herbacheck?
Thanks for the information. I just can't even imagine the frustration of the lagging indicators and, you know, how a team, you guide a team to make changes for what's best for our students and when you don't even have the up-to-date, you know, information. But I appreciate it and to acknowledge your comment, I believe I can speak for my colleagues on the board that we acknowledge the hard work that is done in each and every classroom, all the way up, you know, to all of y'all's teams on supporting the academic support. And it's not represented by one day and one test. That's my belief. I won't speak for y'all on that one, but that's my belief. But in looking at the data, in the overall data, and we all acknowledge there's always room for improvement on things, but in the overall data specifically related to the master's level, there were some trends that really kind of concerned me on some declines. And I wondered if you had any insight on what that is showing? And then what are we doing to meet the needs of our high performers to sustain and grow?
Absolutely. So, and I'll go back to that slide here. We know that as we track data for all of our students, whether that's through MAP or local assessments, our campuses come around the table and talk about our students by name and need. And so I do want to encourage you guys with some confidence that our teachers and our administrators know that growth for all students is very important. And so that does value our students who are at the meets. We want all students who are at meets to be masters. And we want our students at masters to remain at masters and to continue to show growth. And I believe in our campus improvement plans, we have identified some areas there. But we could get some more information specifically at campuses, if you would like that.
I think I just wanted a deeper dive. I mean, the master's level changes were concerning to me. This is great news. Please don't discredit, you know, please don't take the comment as discrediting all of the hard work. But, and all of our students are important, but I think we need to also make sure we remember our high performers and making sure they sustain on those levels.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, board members? Ms. Derek?
Ms. Keen, thank you for the presentation. I always enjoy when you present to us. You do it with such enthusiasm.
I love my job.
I can tell. I want to talk about emergent bilingual. And if this is not your question to answer, just let me know. Because the numbers are going up so significantly, can we define emergent bilingual for the community so that everyone knows? Like, who are we talking about? Who are these students?
Absolutely. So emergent bilinguals are our students who, English is not their primary language. And so we measure emergent bilingual growth through their language acquisition. And so any student, whether they're a newcomer to the country, they go through some testing and they are identified through one of our LPAC committees who takes a look at their language proficiency level and make sure that we are providing support to them with teachers who have the skills in place to do so. So we want to make sure that if they're in an English classroom or an English school, that they're getting the support that they need to grow their language acquisition. And so that's one of those indicators that we want to be aware of because if our students aren't learning English, we want to make sure that we put the support in place that way when they get to high school and they're taking their end-of-course exams, that they're more successful with those so they can graduate.
So is this a range? Some of these students may be in a English-only classroom and they're just getting minimal support from our team versus some of these kids may be in a fully, like bilingual classroom?
So teachers, and this is a great question. Teachers in CFB hold ESL teaching certifications as well. And so our bilingual department supports teachers with teaching strategies. We've done a lot of work with Sidelets and all of that in the summer. And so we work to equip our teachers with the skills to incorporate cognates and support around academic language for our students where English isn't necessarily their first language. So we are always growing our teachers to be more equipped for all students, but specifically around our EB students. We make sure that they have the skills that they need to support them.
So, sorry, I'm gonna keep asking questions about this? Does that mean that if this percentage is up and up and up, does that mean the average classroom and the average classroom teacher is seeing an uptick in those types of students in their classrooms? I didn't mean her, in their classroom also? Because it's kind of like across the board, this is what we're seeing in the district?
We have an increase in students. And so I would say, yes, we could say that most teachers would see an increase. We would have to look at actual feeder patterns and kind of see. We could get that data to you guys to support. Yeah, absolutely.
But the demand is increasing on our teachers because this number is increasing?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Can I just get a clarification for the benefit of the public? On Slide 12, what does TSI mean?
Oh, Texas School Incentive. And so that is a part of how we indicate whether or not our students are ready for college. It's also a great indicator to see if they're ready for career. And I know it's listed under college-ready, but also the skills that they would have under a college-ready indicator would also show career and military as well. So we use that as a way to measure our students as they're graduating.
Great. Thank you. Looking left, looking right. Okay. Ms. Keen, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. And I should say also, thank you to our teachers and their support systems for the efforts that have gone into these scores, the increases that we continue to see post-COVID, recognizing that it does not happen overnight that we get kids to where they need to be and help them continue to grow. So on behalf of the board, we're so thankful for the daily dedication of each of our teachers and the support systems that we're wrapping around them because in the end, this is our community and these kids are going to make a difference in the future of our country.
Board members, have a note. We could take a brief recess. Do we want to take a recess or keep barreling through? Plow through. All right, here we go. So we will proceed to our next agenda item, item number five, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of Consent Agenda items. And the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda at this time? Ms. Herbacheck?
I'd like to request item 5M as in Mary and 5N as in Nancy be removed for individual consideration, please.
Okay. Are there any other items to be removed for individual consideration? Okay.
I have a question about 5E. Is that a part of the Consent Agenda?
Item 5E?
Yes.
5E, the 10 non-business days for consideration of and responses to the public information request for the calendar year of 2024?
No, I'm going on to the item B, page nine. Is that a part of the Consent Agenda? Is that something we discussed?
6E, okay. Okay, so I have a request for withdrawal on 5M and 5N. So if there are no other items to be removed, do I have a motion regarding the Consent Agenda as amended? Ms. Brady?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented minus 5M and 5N.
I have a motion from Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? If a second from Ms. Garza Rojas, is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next item on our agenda is item number six, Items for Discussion and/or Action. We do have a couple of items removed from consent, so we'll proceed to 6A. The title of the items are the pre-meeting briefing held on January 11th, 2024, and the regular meeting held on January 11th, 2024. Ms. Herbacheck?
Yes, unfortunately, I was on a work trip and unable to attend the board meeting, so I was not present at those for the minutes.
With that information, do I have a motion regarding this? Ms. Derek?
I move that we present item 5M and 5N as presented.
Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Shackman. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, the motion carries. The next item is item 6B, Consider and Approve Action Regarding All Matters Related to a May 4th, 2024 General Trustees Election, including Adoption of an Election Order. That would be me. So, board members, we have before us the May 4th election order for two positions that will be open on the Board of Trustees. And so we are looking at that order tonight. Board members, do you have any questions about that? All right, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Benavides?
So my copy in here is in, is it Vietnamese? It's in a different language. It's not in English? Okay, well, I only see that one. Okay, well, I only saw that one, so I thought, wait a minute, I can't read that, but thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, so this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? Ms. Derek?
I move that we approve item 6B, Consider and Approve Action Regarding All Matters Related to a May 4th, 2024 General Trustee Election, including Adoption of an Election Order.
Do I have a second? A second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed, the motion carries. The next item is item 6C, Consider and Approve the Method of Procurement for Construction of Student Services Center. Mr. Blackburn?
As I mentioned earlier, this is just the first of three separate steps. And this is only to approve the procurement method for the Student Services Project.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? No? Ms. Herbacheck?
I, I think I'm just, I still have or have a concern on some others that we're getting so far advanced in steps when this is something as far as a plan that the board still has not reviewed. I mean, I still have fundamental questions on how this works as it relates to our families, to staffing, resources, to what's happening to, you know, current staff in these facilities right now. And I just think this is the cart before the horse still on some. I don't feel like I understand the project. Even, I understand this is not committing money. I understand this is not doing it. But it's just another step that we're moving forward where I don't feel like there's an, I personally don't feel like I have an understanding of what this is going to do and the impact overall.
Additional comments, board members? Ms. Derek?
I'll add to it. My concern is I feel like the board as a whole hasn't been given enough information in order to fully understand not only the facility itself that we're talking about, but like, the ultimate goal is to increase enrollment and make it easier for our families. But then my concern about that is we have transportation mobility issues for families and we cannot, we have not been given a plan that explains on the campus level, what is that going to look like now? Are families going to be told when they show up to a campus to enroll that they have to now drive across town to go to a facility to register? Because it's an all-in-one stop shop, which sounds wonderful. But the reality is, and we can go back to the slide, our economically disadvantaged number is so incredibly high. We're not, why are we not spending more focus on like what we're doing at the campus level to improve some of these services now and address those concerns? And then, fast forward, I, kind of what you, like what you said, struggling with, I don't see in writing and I don't see fundamentally how doing this project is going to increase our enrollment. I mean, people aren't going to fall out of the sky and come to school. So we're being asked to make some very quick decisions on spending a lot of money with not a lot of explanation. And that makes me very nervous. I don't, I mean, I understand, we need to send I, I don't, I mean, I understand, we need to centralize things, but we need to have a plan in place, especially if we're going to commit dollars to that. That's my.
Just a couple, if I may, just a couple of comments. As you mentioned, the basic, the basic concept is to have a one-stop shop for families as they come into the district. Some of our concern, as I've talked to different departments around the district, is there's, they don't always go to the right campus when they first come to enroll as a new family. And sometimes, the campus mistakenly enrolls them at their campus when they should be somewhere else. And a central place would allow us to direct them to the proper campus for them to attend. It also allows the families to avoid multiple different places that they have to connect, to take care of everything they need to as a new family in the district in terms of, they would get their testing at this location, they would get their shots and their vaccinations at this location. So, the goal is for them to come as a family, the whole family can be accommodated, everyone can get tested, they can get directed and helped to what programs they might want to participate in. And when they leave, they're ready to start school. And so, the idea is, as you mentioned, to help preserve and keep the families in our district that we need to, and maybe even grow in the future instead of the small declines that we're seeing right now. We want to try and reverse that.
Additional comments, Ms. Brady?
In the past, we've been given like a computer-animated, like fake drawing, if you will, of the plans that, of what it may look like or what we're hoping to achieve. Is there some way that you can provide that to us and/or an idea, a plan, a map of some sort of the vision? I think that would help.
Certainly.
For all of us to see what you're thinking, or what is, what is being thought of.
Yes, ma'am.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Herbacheck?
Rendering, that's the rendering, you're not looking for rendering. And I think we had seen a draft of, of that. I think, but I think it's just, mine is still a fundamental, what happened, you know, if a family has shown up to the wrong school through no fault, okay? But that's a system problem that somebody at the campus is not, you know, catching. If it's, if it's corrected by having it all in one place and they can look at the school, and that's great, but if a family shows up to the campus, you know, to do it, and to your point, then what hap, you know, if you're at the right school, but then you have to leave and go to the service, you know, a service center to redo it? And it's just a challenge, I mean, fundamentally, I don't understand how it impacts our families and the message and the communication and, you know, for, again, staffing resources because we have people at our campuses that, you know, work with our families day in and day out on doing these things now. Are we doubling the staff at a service center? I just don't understand the resources, the needs.
I'll be happy to follow up with some more information. I will say that my understanding right now is that even if they show up at the right campus and they're able to get enrolled at that campus, there are still multiple stops they have to go through to take care of the other things that they need to before they start attending, like vaccinations, making sure they're in the right programs of choice, that it might be appropriate for them. So, there, as I, as I understand it, there, even if they go to the right place, they have to go to multiple places right now, and we're hoping to reduce that.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Derek?
I'm still gonna go back to, I think we're missing the point of we're not, this is not recognizing the families we serve. We serve primarily economically disadvantaged families, families that do not have cars, do not have ways to get around town, and we are gonna put a huge burden on these families if that's gonna be the expectation. I'm not saying it's not a great idea. I, I look at this as like, maybe that's our end goal at some point, but like, we have some just day-to-day operational things that I think we need to address with enrollment and telling families, helping our families when they show up to campuses before we need to be dumping all this money into a problem that I don't think's gonna, a solution to a problem that I don't think's gonna happen. We, and I mean, Board members, hear me out, we are, someone threw the number at me, economically disadvantaged was 68, 67? That's a ton of our families. And so, I'm just imagining this poor mama walks into McQuarter. McQuarter is far from the ESDC and is told, sorry, can't help you, you have to go across town. Guess what, the charter school that's walking distance to her house? Come on in, we'll take you as you are. Like, this is not a solution. It's not, not for the families that we serve.
All right, any additional comments or questions? So, with that, this item is marked for possible action, does the Board wish to take action? Okay. So, for the record, let it show that 6C, titled Consider or Approve Method for the Procurement and Construction of Student Service Center, has no action taken. We will now move on to item 6D, Consider or Approve Amending Policy BED Local. Mr. Marsh?
Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, esteemed members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to talk about Board Policy BED Local. First, we want to take the opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to the Board Policy Subcommittee. Worked very hard, very diligent, it's, it's been a pleasure for me to work alongside of you. And the members of that committee are Ms. Herbacheck, Ms. Benavides, and Ms. Garza Rojas. Thank y'all very much. So, the Board Policy Subcommittee holds the responsibility of assessing, reviewing, and recommending changes to line policies with best practices to enhance Board policy while reviewing the public participation segment of the policy and benchmarking against other districts, which determined that clarifying the public comment process for special meetings was necessary. Public comments during special meetings should specifically address open meeting agenda items only. Comments pertaining to non-agenda items or closed session items are not permissible. So, for example, this is a regular meeting. So, if someone had come in and wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, they could. But in special meetings or any other type of meeting, that's not permissible. So, this just provides clarity. The next modification to policy is under Procedures. The change is specific to the time allotted for comment for non-stakeholders. The allotted time is recommended to be one minute. So, first, we must understand what stakeholders are. Stakeholders include enrolled students, parents, legal guardians, current employees, current district residents or property owners, representatives of recognized schools, support organizations such as Education Foundation, Booster Club, PTA, and representatives of businesses with an existing contractual arrangement with the district. Non-stakeholders include any individuals not covered or considered stakeholders under this bottle, policy. So, stakeholders will still continue to get three minutes under public comment, but those that have no connection to the district would have one minute for public comment. Audience for Guest Form, there's been some changes to that. This is not really the Board's purview to approve this, but the reason for discussing this or showing this, giving this information is for transparency reasons. So, the additions to the form is a non-stakeholder will be allotted a maximum of one minute for their presentation and may only speak once. They're representing themselves or the group. If they're a student, resident, CFB, staff, or other, we need that indicator. And have you discussed this issue with administrator or Board member, yes or no? And the reason for that is, is the Board policy encourages everyone to go at the lowest level to resolve a problem. Date, the topic discussed, administrator or Board member, time, document completed, and then the district representative that assisted them. If the proposed modifications to Board Policy BED Local receive approval tonight, the update, the updated form will come to effect in March. The district is currently working on modernizing the process, enhancing customer service by introducing an online method for those interested in participating in Audience for Guest. Further details will be shared as they become available. Are there any comments from anyone on the Subcommittee?
Any comments from Subcommittee members? Ms. Garza Rojas?
Thanks for your hard work, we appreciate it. I don't know about them, but I love working with you, so thank you very much. He's awesome, I mean, you guys know, I know, I guess I'm speaking for them as well. So, if we approve it tonight, when is this online form going to be posted on the website?
Okay, we've had a few delays in getting that set up. It will be ready before the May meeting. We are planning to go ahead and run the systems parallel. So, you'll have the option of going online, but if someone comes in, they'll still have the availability and the opportunity to fill out the form and still speak.
Thank you for clarifying that, that was gonna be my next question. Thank you very much.
But we would transition to fully online.
That is correct.
Yeah, that, I just want to clarify that, that after that, that time. And one other thing that we discussed, I just want to make sure that that form is being mobile phone.
Yes.
What word am I using?
It will, it will function appropriately on a, a mobile device.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Benavides? And then the dual system will run for the rest of the year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, school year?
Through June.
June, okay, thank you. All right, questions or comments from the non-Subcommittee members? I'll just extend my thank you to the Subcommittee and to Brian. I'm sure Deu was in there too, helping assist. Thank you for your efforts and work, I know you guys reviewed a lot of different options and what others are doing to make sure that we're up with the current standards. So, thank you for your work on this. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
You're welcome.
All right, so, this item is also marked for possible action, does the Board wish to take action? Ms. Herbacheck?
I move that we approve amending policy BED Local as presented.
Do I have a second? Ms. Garza Rojas, is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next item is item 6E, Consider and Approve, Consider or Approve to Take Possible Action to Approve the Resolution Whether, Resolution, sorry, excuse me, let me start over. The next agenda item is 6E, Consider or Approve to Take Possible Action to Approve the Resolution Regarding Whether to Adopt a Policy Authorizing the District to Employ Chaplains Under Chapter 23 of the Texas Education Agency. Texas Education Code, my words are just tongue-tied, I apologize. Mr. Marsh?
Thank you very much. So, during the 88th Legislative Session, Senator Mays Middleton of Galveston presented House Bill 763, which was subsequently signed by Governor Abbott and then became law. This amended the Education Code, which granted districts the option to allocate safety funds for the employment of a chaplain instead of a certified counselor to fulfill the duties mandated for school counselors. The law specifies that chaplains are not required to hold a certification from the State Board of Education to provide counseling services. The law further mandates that every school board in Texas must take a vote on whether they will approve using chaplains as counselors prior to March 1st of 2024. In response to this legal change, the Board Policy Subcommittee convened to assess the law's implications within the context of district policies. Ensuring the well-being of our children is paramount. It is, it falls upon the district to hire the most qualified individuals for this crucial responsibility. The traditional path to becoming a counselor involves completing an approved education preparation program, holding a master's degree, and passing a certification exam. In any discussion about potential actions in a district, not just CFB, but every district, we all must ask ourselves, is this action in the best interest of our students? What is best for our students? Specifically, when considering placing an individual in a position to provide vital support, is it reasonable to place an individual in a position without the requisite training and education? Also, is it reasonable to expect an individual to be successful when they've been put in a position without the appropriate training and education? Chaplains are indispensable contributors to the well-being of CFB students. They have been serving CFB for many, many years in different capacities. And Dr. Eldridge has introduced various initiatives to foster community engagement in supporting students. And one of them is Faith, Faith-Based Leaders Alliance, the FBL. Unfortunately, the site's not coming up. So, what you can do is go to our webpage, CFBISD.edu, and you go to the Community and Volunteers and click on that, and the second line on there is Faith-Based Leaders Alliance. And what you'll find in there is all the information about the committee. And currently, there's 32 members of that committee of different religions. They meet once a month here in this building for an hour on the first Tuesday of the month. And they have contributed a lot already. And if anyone's interested, they can go to our website, like I said, and go to Under Volunteers, and they can fill out the form. Also, on there is the contact information for our community liaisons, Ms. Spotsfield and Ms. Pena. Okay, being that it is not reasonable to place an individual in a position in which they do not have the needed training and certification, and given that chaplains already play a pivotal role in supporting students and families, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees refrain from approving chaplains as employees responsible for counseling duties. Their current impactful contributions are valuable, and maintaining this role preserves the unique and meaningful support they offer to the CFB ISD community. CFB is very fortunate to have the faith-based leaders who are working daily to support our students and our families.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Shackman?
I have several comments about this. I'm actually a graduate school, University of Southern California-trained, licensed chaplain, where I worked in ministry for 15 years. The language that the Legislature or TEA, whoever put that together, is ridiculous. It does not delineate between what kind of chaplain we're talking about. I'm gonna vote for it because we have to, to satisfy state requirements. But to say that there are, that, you know, it's like the youth minister from Podunk Junior High Church down the corner to somebody who has a master's degree, umpteen supervised hours and all of that and credentials is significantly different. But the other thing that really hacks me about this, it's another situation where the state is stuffing something down our throats and we get no say in it, and they're removing another notch of local control. God forbid if we ever have a Uvalde here. But we might very well look forward to having access to some death and dying counselors who deal with it on a regular basis from a different perspective. And this would, is gonna make it so that we don't have that choice. And that is frustrating to me. Again, we need to do this, it's the right thing to do to meet state codification, but... But it is a poorly conceived law and very poorly crafted. And the people who wrote it and worded it need to be taken out behind the bar.
Board members, any additional comments or questions? Ms. Benavides?
Thank you. The items you presented, Brian, didn't even touch on what is listed here in item E. It says, "The bill allows districts to use safety funds to hire unlicensed chaplains for mental health roles." And you did not mention mental health roles. You mentioned them being highly certified to counsel children.
And I apologize. I said counselor duties, counselor responsibilities, which is inclusive.
So, I believe that our faith-based leaders offer so many different resources to our community. And in the day and age we live, they're very important in individual lives. I am aware of the FDL. Is that what you call it?
Yes.
Okay. But what are they doing for one-on-one? I mean, just asking. I don't know. You know, you've said that they offer support to our families, and I know they do because they're in our community and they have wonderful resources and provide so much already. And they're a group of great leaders, but, you know, hitting on CFB, what's the direct impact? Providing socks, food? I mean, you know, I don't know.
Just want to take the opportunity, now that I got the site up, go to Community and Volunteers, under Become a Partner, you see Faith-Based Leaders Alliance. You can click on that. And Ms. Benavides, you can go down here to areas in which they're serving right now, and they're gonna expand upon that, is they're currently mentoring students. They've adopted a campus. They're volunteering on campuses, making donations, sponsoring items for campus events, and attending campus events, and supporting families.
Can you elaborate?
What they're doing now, they're just determining what are the needs, what do they need? You know, is it clothing? Is it food? They're just trying to address the basic fundamental needs.
I was on the committee for that. I was not a part of the, I am for faith-based counseling in our district because of things that I've already shared. You know, we need the whole community for our children, no matter what their status is. And I'm not talking about someone off the street. I'm talking about people that really care about our kids. And it's very important because we all have something. We're a team of eight here. We bring greatness in different capacities, and so can they. And as you've shown, they do. So, I appreciate the presentation.
Mr. Bocic?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that this resolution does not change anything about the wonderful and needed support that faith-based leaders currently provide in our school. We are not gonna, our intent is not to prevent them. We want them volunteering, supporting our families, mentoring our stu, we want that. We want that involvement, to your point, as a community. What this resolution is, is purely about hiring them as mental health providers, as employees of CFB ISD. So, I just want to make that clear, that that's what the resolution is.
Ms. Garza Rojas?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for working with me, as always. There is a serious feedback that I cannot get rid of, so I don't know if anybody else has their microphone on. Or Brian, I'm not sure if it's your microphone. I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to ask you to turn it up. Oh, magic. There we go. Okay. I'm sorry. So, first off, I want to say, subcommittee, awesome. We did an awesome job. We had a great discussion about it. I am so appreciative of our faith-based leader group. They are very, very important in our community, and they give back so much. And I am gonna say thank you forever. They serve in the capacity to support our families and to be able to navigate difficult times. How many leaders are in it? Thirty-two, did you say? Thirty-two faith-based leaders. That's a lot. However, I also appreciate without, just, I appreciate how much time counselors have to go to school to get an education to actually serve our kids and their mental health needs. It's a calling, and it is, it's very important for our kids to have that. It's important for our kids to know who our mental health professionals are and who they can go to in case of a situation that is extreme. Something could happen. And so, I just wanted to give in my two cents on that and wanted to give you a perspective on that, that the time and the effort that our counselors put in to make sure they're educated and know how to help kids in need is there. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to say that when I first heard about this a couple of months ago, I was very excited that the legislature was actually looking out for public schools because I saw it as, they're trying to help us. They're trying to do what's best for kids. But then I thought about it, and I thought, we don't have certified people coming into our rooms with children, kindergartners, first graders, with people who are not certified or don't have the training. What are they saying to our kids? And I think those of us who know chaplains and clergy here, most of you would say, my preacher, my priest, my whoever, he'd be awesome in the classroom. He'd be great, or she'd be great. But that's not all of them. So, I think it's important to protect our kids. I know we have counselors coming down the segue to fill our needs. And so, for that reason, I will probably, I will vote in favor of not hiring them as employees. But like many of you, I think it sounded like a good idea when I first heard it. It's just when you start thinking about the nitty-gritty, when you start talking about them being employees of our district, it brings a different light to it. So, I just want to put that out there.
Additional comments?
Okay, hold on. So, following Board operating procedures, I'll go and then I'll have you jump into. I think, I'll echo what most of you have said, that our faith-based leaders are a critical part of our community. We need them supporting in the capacities that they're already supporting. If we were to have a major crisis, I know that they are gonna be there by our side to support us and help keep our whole child mantra of critical importance. But the certifications and the criteria that are required to be mental health professionals under the requirements that are by law prior to this are of utmost importance to me personally. I have children who have used counseling services, and I think it is important that they have a trusted professional that we know their standards behind. And I am frustrated by the Senate bill because I believe that it puts us in a position to be at odds on something that is not what it is meant to be. There may be communities where this is right for them. They may live in a rural area. They may not have access to mental health professionals, and they may need this. But we are blessed to have amazing staff that care for our kids every day and have their credentials. So, with that, those are my comments. Ms. Benavides?
One thing I was asking, was gonna ask about is clarity on hiring full-time, part-time, or as needed? Because I know you mentioned that, Mr. Bocic. I don't know what the bill says.
That would be up to you as a board to define that.
Thank you.
In what capacity.
Okay.
All right. So, this item is marked possible action. I'll ask if the board wishes to take action, but if so, let me remind you that you have the resolution in front of you, and it must be read aloud and notated in the minutes should the board wish to take action. Mr. Bocic?
I move that we approve the resolution of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School Board of Trustees regarding whether to adopt a policy authorizing the district to employ a chaplain under chapter 23 of the Texas Education Code. And that resolution is, whereas section 23.001 of the Texas Education Code permits the district to employ a chaplain to provide mental health services to students as assigned by the board, whereas Senate Bill 763 passed by the eighty-eighth Texas Legislature requires each school board to take a record vote between September 1st, 2023, and March 1st, 2024, on whether to adopt a policy authorizing the district to employ a chaplain under Education Code, Chapter 23. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District hereby does not permit the district to employ a chaplain to provide mental health services to students. If approved, adopted this first day of February 2024 by the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees.
All right. I have a motion from Ms. Bocic. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Garza Rojas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a favor of six in favor and one opposed, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, closed meeting as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, schoolchildren, district employee disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, 551.084, investigation. The board will now move into closed session for discussion of the superintendent evaluation tool. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations. The time is now 9:01 PM.
Grammarly now uses AI to help you write, not just revise. Type a prompt and generate a persuasive, mistake-free draft in seconds. Personalize to your unique writing style. Download it for free at grammarly.com. Get $700 back on Google Pixel 8 Pro on Google Fi Wireless. No trade-in required. This is Pixel 8 Pro. The all-pro phone enhanced with Google AI for powerful performance and the best pixel camera yet. Pair Pixel 8 Pro with our Unlimited Plus plan to enjoy high-speed hotspot tethering and international data in over 200 destinations. All at no extra cost. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless.
Grammarly now uses AI to help you write, not just revise. Type a prompt and generate a persuasive, mistake-free draft in seconds. Personalize to your unique writing style. Download it for free at grammarly.com. Get $700 back on Google Pixel 8 Pro on Google Fi Wireless. No trade-in required. This is Pixel 8 Pro. The all-pro phone enhanced with Google AI for powerful performance and the best pixel camera yet. Pair Pixel 8 Pro with our Unlimited Plus plan to enjoy high-speed hotspot tethering and international data in over 200 destinations. All at no extra cost. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. Get $700 back on Pixel 8 Pro with the Unlimited Plus plan. Order yours today on Google Fi Wireless. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I don't wanna let you down. I don't wanna let you down. I don't wanna let me down. I promise, I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Might not look like it. When I'm singing on sidewalks. Everyone tells me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I don't wanna let you down. I don't wanna let you down. I don't wanna let me down. I promise, I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Might not look like it. When I'm singing on sidewalks. Everyone tells me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying.
Hey, everyone. Our research department tells me that this is the best performing mid-ad ever. I'm sure my mom will be disappointed.
Hey, what are you listening to?
Um...
Can I sit here?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, who are you listening to?
Nah Hoar.
Actually, um, what song?
Um, This Town.
Ready?
What are you doing?
That's a sad song. Are you okay?
Okay.
It's sad.
Yeah, okay.
And I wanna tell you everything. The words I never got to say the first time around. Cause I remember everything. When we were the children playing in this very town. Wish I was there with you now. Cause if the whole world was watching, I'd still dance for you. Drive highways and byways to be there where you... Over and over, the only truth. Everything comes back to you. I love that song.
Did you just learn that?
I already knew it. That's like my favorite... Hey, what are you listening to?
Um...
Can I sit here?
Yeah.
Hey, sorry. What are you listening to?
Right now, cigarette baby.
Oh shit, wait, can I play F'T?
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, I love that song. Sorry, I know that kinda came out of nowhere. Down, 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 down. Did you stand there all alone? Oh, I cannot explain what's going down. I can see you sitting next to me. In and out, somewhere else right now. You talk, look away. I forget lyrics, but I can see it clear as day. Close your eyes, so afraid. I'll be behind that baby face. You don't really have a baby face, it's just like more pretty, but...
Thank you.
I forgot how that goes. Do you know the chorus? Do, 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 do.
I'm not gonna sing that.
Oh yeah, I'll be on... Hey, sorry. What are you listening to?
Right now, cigarette baby.
I go out, find a crowd, never say who I am. Then I go, make a joke, make them laugh, cause I can't. On my own, I don't know how to get out of my head. A million likes, a million eyes, but every high comes down to me alone. Missing home, wishing that I could bounce back like I used to. But I don't know how to. I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Pretty girls only work till I go mess it up. And a glass only lasts till the next morning comes. I don't know how to stop it, I'm low on my options. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I know it might not look like it. When you see me singing on sidewalks. You laugh and tell me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying. I don't wanna let you down. I don't wanna let you down. Don't wanna let me down. I promise, I promise, I promise, I'm trying. Might not look like it. When I'm singing on sidewalks. Everyone tells me that I ain't got no reason not to be happy. But I barely made it through last week. I can't stand me being like this. Cause every day's harder to fight it. But I promise, I promise, I'm trying.
We are back in open session and the time is now 10:22 PM. The board will now move to the next agenda item. Item number nine, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time related to the posted agenda items? All right, seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 10:22 PM.